It's February 3rd, 2022, and time for another Planning Board meeting. We're starting with the consent agenda. Can we get adoption, a motion for adoption of the first resolution? That would be Nielsville Middle School Final Forest Conservation Plan.
Jerry Sishy so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, that's approved. And the second resolution is 23126 Frederick Road Water Quality Plan.
Jerry Sishy so moved to approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Opposed? And one, so that's four to zero to one with Carol Rubin abstaining. Could I get a motion on the record plats?
Jerry Sishy move approval on the record plats?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, that's approved. The Wildwood Manor Shopping Center Preliminary Plan and Site Plan Extension Request.
Move approval, Jerry Sishy.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that's approved. Miles Coppola Preliminary Plan Extension Request.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that's approved. And that brings us to item three, Warner Circle Special Park.
If I could just indicate the reason for the abstention, because I think we have to put that on the record, is that I wasn't, I was not a commissioner at the time of the decision.
Okay, very good. Let's turn to item three. Okay, we're ready for item three, Warner Circle Special Park with Brandi Sandberg, Henry Coppola, and Mady Figueroa.
Good morning, Planning Board. We're here to present today a disposition proposal for the buildings within the Warner Circle Special Park. We briefed you in closed session a week ago on some of the financial details, and we're here to give a brief public presentation and get your approval of a resolution so we can move this project forward. As you're aware, this is Warner Circle Special Park. It is located in the center of Kensington. The park is about four, almost four and a half acres. It has a Queen Anne Manor House and a Carriage House of similar era. The history of the property is that from the 50s to the 2000s, used as a nursing home. It was purchased by the Department of Parks in 2005 through the Legacy Open Space Program for the purpose of preserving the open space surrounding the historic setting of the building for public use, also preserve the structure and the significant structures in its historic setting, as well as providing some sort of public benefit through adaptive reuse of these large structures. This is county titled parkland under the 1972 agreement between the Commission and the County. The, once we purchased the property, we went and spent over the past 15 years, spent a lot of time doing improvements to the park as well as stabilizing the structures. We removed the non-contributing nursing home additions. You can see the significant flat-roofed nursing home additions there that extend almost all the way from the Manor House to the, to the Carriage House. That was removed. The building exteriors were restored and painted to the original color scheme. Rebuilt a south stone terrace that is used quite often for public events. Rebuilt a porch on the east of the rear wing of the property in that area right there, and reconnected the historic driveway. There are just some before and after pictures. You can see how much extra green space and connectivity was added back to the park by removing the nursing home wing. You can see how the house itself has been restored, a proper color scheme, and trees that were too close to the house were removed. This is a view of the side of the historic house there. You can see the flat nursing home wing. Then after it was removed and the new stone terrace, a rebuilt stone terrace was put back, which is a significant feature of the structure at this time. And there you can catch a glimpse of the Carriage House on the left and its condition when we acquired the property, and here's how it looks today. So while we were doing all of that restoration to the structures, to the park, creating a great public open space for people, we were also working, a variety of staff for many years have been working, to find an appropriate and feasible adaptive reuse for this property. There's been extensive coordination with the community from the day we acquired this property. The three steps we've taken in the past were to do an RFP for a product partner in the 2008, 2009 era. No viable applicants came out of that process. After that, we then pursued the idea of a public reuse of the buildings, putting some park offices as well as laboratories in the building. Facility plan was approved by the Planning Board, but it was never funded for implementation for a variety of reasons related to budget and staff being already consolidated into the Wheaton Headquarters Building. So since 2012, we've been looking to find a feasible and appropriate reuse. So that has led us to where we are today. We were connected about five or six years ago with Washington Landmark Construction. They are a firm that specializes in taking historic structures and creating high-quality residential uses in those buildings. Here's pictures of two recent examples of their work. The power plant and the gymnasium, both at National Park Seminary. In fact, the gymnasium project recently received a Planning Department Design Excellence. So the proposal that's in front of you today is to create up to 19 residential units in the two buildings. And in addition to the Manor House, this is the proposed addition. This is a side view from the east of the original house. This is very similar. This concept sketch at the top is the sketch that was done for the facility plan. This is very similar. This was the proposed addition that was done for the park offices. So this is a very similar proposal to that, except for residential use. Parking for the units will be provided through Eastmans over appropriate areas of pavement on the parkland. So right now, there is a development agreement and contract of sale. That is a document that's been negotiated between the County, the Commission, and the developer. It will create a condominium regime whereby boxes will be created around both the Manor House and the Carriage House, and all of the rest of the park, including the land underneath the buildings, will stay in Unit One. That condominium will be the park. The purchase price, the developer's paying $677,500 cash and in-kind benefits to acquire those two buildings. And as you can see from this list, there's a significant number of additional development review and approvals by a variety of public entities that will take place over the coming time period before there's actually construction on the site. And in fact, it will come back to the Planning Board for development review approvals. And the Board of Public Works, Maryland Board of Public Works, has already completed one of those approvals previously. One key element is that there will be continued public access to the buildings, even though they're being sold to a private entity and will be turned into residential uses. There will be, the negotiated deal includes use of the stone terrace up to three times per year for special events such as the upper in the park, pumpkin rucker roll, or other events that the community and parks may wish to host. There's going to be a recreation room built on the lower floor of the Carriage House, and that can be used by the community through the Parks Department reserving it up to eight times per year. There are also going to be regular open houses and other access to an indoor exhibit on the history of Kensington and Warner Manor. It's likely that that exhibit would be in the restored front hall of the building that's shaded here in pale blue. And since there is a Maryland Historical Trust Eastman over the property, there may be other public access required by them. So we are asking for the approval today. This is the disposition part of the process. We are asking that the Planning Board adopt the draft resolution in number 22016. That's in front of you today. The two main elements of that resolution are, first, the Planning Board recommend that the Commission approve the disposition of the Manor and Carriage House buildings to Warner Circle Mansion Condominiums LLC for a negotiated price of $677,500, and approve the establishment of the condominium regime to provide for the operation of the park by the Commission in the park condo, and the development of up to 19 residential units in the residential condo by the developer thereunder. So we have a variety of staff on the line who can answer any questions you might have about this project. And otherwise, we're hoping the Planning Board will move approval and the resolution.
Are there any questions or comments for the staff on this project?
Yeah, I would just like to clarify. It's probably splitting hairs, but I think what we're doing is recommending, I would like to recommend approval disposing not just the buildings, but the condominiums that are created around the two buildings, the Manor House and the Carriage House, so that there's no confusion as to what is actually being disposed.
We can amend the resolution if necessary.
Jerry Sishy, have a question. On the use of the two rooms a couple, a few times a year, is there any cost to the parks for that, or how is that working out?
No, that's, that is at no cost. And if the community wants to use that, they come through parks. So parks would be the unit to, the entity to reserve that. There's no cost, and that's why that's in-kind compensation. That's part of the compensation package we are getting.
There's no, yeah, no cleanup charges, no cleanup charges or anything. Okay, thank you.
I had a quick question. I know you had mentioned that you could use the stone terrace for activities up to certain times a year. So just so we're clear, the grounds themselves, which is pretty significant, I think it said four acres of land, we can continue to activate that spot, right? Or is that going to be controlled by the condominium?
No. The, the rest of the property remains a public park that is free for the public to use anytime they so wish. And, and the Parks Department can host events.
Perfect.
And, and, and once the condominiums are built and there's a, the residential condominiums are built, the sub-condominiums, and there's a condominium association, let's say we have a grand plan and there are four special events that we want to host in that park per year, and all four of them would like to use the stone terrace. There's nothing that says we can't contact that residential condominium association and say, can we rent the stone terrace for these additional events? It's just we get three for free.
Got it. Okay, that's helpful. Thank you so much, and great job, and it's an exciting project.
Yeah, that is really an understatement. This project has been so difficult, and there have been so many really frustrating efforts that have not worked out to try to see this property reused. And really have to hand it to all of you for, for running this to ground. I know Mady has worked closely with Greg Austin from the County, who is very helpful at working it through the executive branch. And I know Brenda and others on the park staff have been at this for, you know, the better part of a decade trying to figure out how to work on this. And I should say Norman Dreyfus gets a lot of credit for this because he was the one who, I think, connected the park staff with some real estate professionals who were able to provide some independent perspective on what the realistic potential uses of the property might be, and really settled on this idea of the condominium arrangement. And, and that turned out to actually be really right on the market. And I was very skeptical about that at the time. I was just sort of said, well, Norman, go ahead if you want to try to bring in some consultants and, who are willing to look at this, and they didn't charge us for, for their advice. But I just thought frankly that it was a waste of time. And I was, I was, I'm very glad to have been proven wrong because that has brought us to where we are now after more than a decade of beating our head against the wall and being unable to find a tenant. So that's all by way of saying, great job. And also just providing some context for anybody who's watching this to understand, we really had thought we'd exhausted every possibility for this property. And to see this happen, and hopefully we'll get to closing, and would love to see a ribbon cutting for the new condos in our lifetime, right? With that, if there are no other comments or questions, if we get a motion to recommend that the Commission approve disposition of this property, and the establishment of the condominium regime that goes along with that.
Jerry Sishy so moved and adoption of the resolution.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, that is approved. Great job, everybody. Hopefully, we can close the books on this one. And now we'll, and now we'll move to item four, MacArthur Boulevard Bike Way. Alrighty, it's time to talk about MacArthur Boulevard Bike Way Phase Three. And I think we have Stephen Aldrich. Steve, long time no see, how've you been?
Doing great, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Excellent, take it away.
Thank you. For the record, Steve Aldrich from the Countywide Planning and Policy Division. This is MacArthur Boulevard Bike Way, Segment Three. Sometimes it's called Phase, sometimes it's called Segment. We thought Segment was more appropriate. So this is mandatory referral 2022-012. Joining us today from Montgomery Planning is Saquon Gatling from Dan County Planning Environmental, and Dan Brugart from Countywide Planning Historic Preservation. The applicant is Montgomery County DOT, and today we have Dan Sheridan and Yasmeen Esmiley, and the consultant Amanda Havener from JMT. So we're going to go through, I'm going to go through an introduction of the project and talk about some of, you know, the elements of the project and some of the details, and then go through the actual design. You know, this is going to supplement what's in, was in the staff report. And then Saquon is going to talk about our environmental analysis findings, and Dan is going to talk about historic, our historic preservation findings. I'll then get back to master plan conformity, and then we have staff review and recommendations. So to start with, this is the third of three segments of MacArthur Boulevard, where DOT has been working on installing a continuous side path that meets the bicycle master plan. I think we are in, in front of you a year or so ago. I think Juan Castro gave the presentation on Segment One. Segment Two is built back in 2013 or 2014, and this is the final segment that takes us from Oberlin Avenue and the Clare Barton ramps all the way down to the DC line. So MacArthur Boulevard today is quite a busy two-lane road. It carries 12,000 vehicles per day, and it is classified currently as a two-lane arterial in the master plan of highways and transitways. Per the Complete Streets Design Guideline, this, this will likely be reclassified as a neighborhood connector. Today, much of this corridor has an existing side path. There, there are a few places where it converts to a shoulder. But the corridor also has limited shoulders along most of its distances. And anyone who's actually driven or ridden a bike on this road knows that most, most of the bike riders on this road, especially in the weekends, are not traveling the side path, they're on the road. But there is a mixture of both, and so this, the bicycle master plan recognized that. And actually, master plan, two different types of facilities, the bike shoulder and, and the side path. What's important along this corridor is that underneath this road, there are two major water supply aqueducts that are owned and maintained by the Army Corps of Engineers. And in fact, the entire MacArthur Boulevard right of way is owned by the Army Corps as well. And so pretty much anything that DOT does in this road requires Corps approval. And there's a lot of sensitivity, certainly as you saw when we gave our previous Segment One presentation, on anything that intrudes into, you know, into the subsurface in terms of its impacts to the two aqueducts. Next slide. Some of the details, of course, DOT is the applicant, JMT is their consultant. You will have noticed in the plans that, on some of the plans, it says Sabre Wang. Some of the plans, it says URS. It's just the long history of this, this project is taking a long time, and there's been some, some stops and starts, some due to lack of budget. But we're, we're happy that this is now moving forward. And the schedule calls for this to be constructed in the fall of 2025, so it looks like it's fully funded and moving forward expeditiously. The project in general calls for eight-foot-wide side paths along the entire length, a five-foot-wide grass buffer, and three-foot-wide shoulders on each side of MacArthur Boulevard. And there are improved crosswalks at several locations, and parking lot improvements specifically at an existing, an existing parking lot opposite Walhold, I can't say the name very well, Walholden Road. And there's also an improvement to the side path at an existing section that's very steep to make it less steep. And I'll, I'll go through that, that in detail. So I'm going to take you through the plans, there are 14 plan sheets. So we'll try to go pretty quickly through this. This first sheet shows the, the northern starting point, which is at Oberlin Avenue and the Clare Barton Parkway ramp. And you'll notice purple stars, those tend to indicate locations where there are pedestrian crossings. And the one thing I want to note here is that, that, this crosswalk is a crosswalk that includes both the ramp and Oberlin Avenue, and as a result, the crosswalk is very long. And so we, we sort of identify that as a safety concern, and that will, I guess, feed into our recommendations later on. The next section pretty much replicates what's out there today. And I think it's important to note that this path was built many years ago and is in need of some significant maintenance anyway. But most of the work through sections such as these is, is adding the shoulders in both directions and redoing the pavement on the side path. This section shows, you can see two stars on this one. One is a crosswalk at Mohican Road, and the other is a crosswalk at the Mohican Swim Club. And so very important connections to connect to the side path. And here we, we show Walholden Road, and you'll notice that the side path will cut across the parking lot that's across the street. And currently today, that's all open, so it's all paved. And so this will essentially establish an entry and an exit. So it formalizes the parking lot a little better, which from a safety perspective is, 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 is good news. I'm going to move right along. If you have any questions, just tell me, and I can, I can stop. But this is a 2.2-mile-long corridor, and a lot of the plans actually look, look very similar. This next slide, I've identified, this is approach right around, I think it's, this, it might be Wapakoneta Road. And this is an area where there is no buffer. I've highlighted areas with no buffer in red. There can, some constraints. And so in this, in this area, the buffer disappears. So you essentially have an eight-foot side path that's going to be right up against the three-foot shoulder. So this continues. This next slide, we're approaching Maryland Avenue. Maryland Avenue is, it's, it's kind of visually an unusual intersection. And one of the reasons is because the Army Corps of Engineers has a heavy vehicle bypass lane. And so any trucks or school buses or buses that, that serve Maryland Avenue to the east, they, they have to use the ramp. And that's because of the loading that could occur on the aqueducts at this point. So initially, when we looked at this, we were hoping, can we consolidate that or get rid of it? What's the purpose? And, you know, because it was leading to this sort of skewed, long crosswalk. But the constraints from the Corps of Engineers have, I guess, really limited what can be done here. Now this next section, this is probably, I would say, geometrically, one of the toughest parts for the side path. This is between Maryland and Sangamore. The, the side path sort of veers away from the road and goes down the hill a little bit. And then a little bit past where the, actually, pretty much where the eight-foot side path note is on the screen, the trail has a close to 20% grade. So it's pretty tough for your average bicyclist to make it up that hill. And so this plan proposes to reduce that grade from 20 to 12%. And so it's, it's far short of meeting ADA. But I want to mention is that in the, in the staff report, in the attachments, in the design plans, there were a couple different concepts. One was a boardwalk, and the other was a switchback, series of switchback ramps to try to meet ADA standards. And both of those concepts were explored by the applicant with the Corps of Engineers, and both of those concepts were rejected. And both of those concepts were rejected. The sensitivity of having a structure so close to these substructures was unacceptable. This appears to be a much more acceptable version because it's pretty much on the same alignment. It's just with more fill. On top of the existing trail to to reduce the steepness of the grade. And I will note that, you know, with this design. Certainly, an option would be to, for folks who don't want to do tackle the twelve percent grade would be to. Use the the bikeable shoulders, starting at Maryland or at Sangamore. And then switch back to the side path. Because that would be, you know, that would be ADA. ADA acceptable. The next, this graphic shows the essentially the intersection of Sangamore Road and Matticat Road. Couple stars here, these are some pedestrian crossings, pedestrian bike crossings. This is an important connection point because this is where the MacArthur Boulevard side path would connect to the Little Falls Stream Valley Trail. And the Capital Crescent Trail. And it's worth noting that once you get into DC, there are no bike trails or even bike lanes. And probably the majority of folks would make this connection to access the Capital Crescent Trail to head into DC. And so that's, it's a very, very important connection and it certainly was identified by parks. With some need for improvements. And I'll, I'll talk about that in a little bit. This next section, this is, you know, near. Towards the end of the corridor and the area in red is also another place where there's no buffer. This is along the property of the National Geo Intelligence Agency. And. You know, you'll notice the right of way is actually, it seems like there's room. But the again, the right of way is owned by the Army Corps. And right now, there's a fence right up against this. This side path, this is an existing side path. And the other side of the right of way is being used by park for parking. And finally, the last slide would, again, would just continue it towards the DC line. And so that is the, the plan view. And I just want to show, this is one typical slide from the, from the the plan set. There's, there's tons of them. And I didn't want to focus on that too much, but this is just to really to show and demonstrate. The the two aqueducts, you know, sort of where they sit. And as you can see, one aqueduct is very old. And they, you know, generally the the older aqueduct travels generally underneath the west, the, the west. I guess it's the northbound direction or the outbound direction. And the newer aqueduct is generally on the shoulder. You know, pretty much close to where the, the, the side path is proposed. So now talking about the project, we, you know, planning staff has concerns, a little concerns about the project. We realize that. You know, the Army Corps of Engineers. Purview certainly with their, their right of way makes it difficult to accomplish the master plan objectives. But regardless, those are the things that we're reviewing this project on. So the first one is that the eight foot wide side path does not meet ASHTO and. Complete Streets Design Guide line default width of eight, ten feet, so it's two feet short. The five foot wide grass buffer does not meet Complete Streets default widths of six feet, one foot short. The three foot wide shoulders also does not meet ASHTO or Complete Streets minimum widths of four feet. The posted speed limit today is thirty. And I know further north of the corridor during the previous mandatory referral, we actually had speed data and we found that people actually travel much faster than that. We think it might be a little bit lower here, but the, the target speed, based on the Complete Streets Design Guide line should be twenty-five miles per hour. And so the other item we mentioned is that we believe race pedestrian crosswalks should be considered as traffic calming devices along this corridor. To help attain or maintain. The Complete Streets Design Guidelines target speed. I think an important thing to note is that. Between the time that Complete Streets, since it was approved by, by this body. DOT is still working on revising. A bunch of regulations, including chapter forty-nine and the traffic coming guidelines, but currently traffic coming guidelines require citizen involvement. So this project can't include raised crosswalks at this time. It would be nice if they could. As I mentioned, there is a section that has a steep grade. And this project is reducing it from twenty percent to twelve. It still does not meet ADA requirements. And then finally, the connection between the proposed side path and the Little Falls Stream Valley Trail and the Capital Crescent Trail. Is not signed and we have some safety concerns about it. Next, I'm going to have Saquon talk about his environmental review, Saquon.
Thanks, Stephen. For the record, Saquon Gatling with Down County Planning. So associated with the previous phases, segments of this project, there was an RIFSD approved for. The study area on December twenty-second and twenty fifteen. And the inventory detailed the natural and manmade features along the corridor, which includes just under. Point four acres of forest along the entire stretch that was studied. And that showed many specimen and significant trees as well as steep slopes and irritable soils, which are sensitive environmental features that should be. Managed very carefully, especially in this master plan area here. Given these environmental features, the applicant did submit analysis studying the project scope in reference to the size of the shared path. And the eight feet was chosen partially because it does reduce the disturbance of the area and helps retain more of the steep slopes and trees along the site in the segment. On the next slide, I'm showing, just showing that the project does come under an exemption twenty-two eight-five. As it will be reviewed by the state. With this, they are still supposed to minimize forest removal, land disturbance and loss of specimen trees to the extent practical. Which is what we would ask them to do, given the the environmental constraints along the corridor. The project does also have a stormwater waiver for the entire segment, which was approved in twenty sixteen September by MCDPS. The approval letter did state that engineered sediment control plans required as well as adequate stabilization of the steep slopes. That's addressed during the detailed design phase with your help. Explain and alleviate any concerns for the steep slopes along the right of way area for this project.
Great, thank you, Saquon. Next, Dan Brukhart from Historic Preservation is going to talk about the review that was done for this mandatory referral, Dan.
Good morning, Dan Brukhart, for the record. Our review was relatively straightforward. We identified four master plan historic sites within the project area. The Ballsy and Charles Castle, which you see in the lower right, which are eighteen ninety buildings that were constructed as, as the beginning of a failed real estate venture. The Sycamore Store, which is a nineteen twenty-eight commercial building. And then Bond Field's Garage, which is an early nineteen seventeen garage close to the the DC line. And our review determined that the proposed project would not have any impact on Sycamore Store and the RA Charles and Ballsy Castle. Because it runs on the south side of the road. And it runs immediately adjacent to the designated parcel for Bond Fields, but will not impact it. Additionally, the proposal is not going to impact the CNO National Canal District, which it abuts in a couple of locations. And it will not impact the historic aqueducts below MacArthur Boulevard.
Great, thank you, Dan. So from a master plan perspective, in terms of transportation. The master plan highways and transit ways recommends this road as a two lane arterial with an eighty foot right of way. And as I mentioned, this road is a neighborhood connector. Per the Complete Streets Design Guide, which does call for a twenty-five mile per hour target speed, which I think is the most critical piece of that. As that guide applies to this road. The bicycle master plan again recommended two facilities on this road. Which, you know, there, there are some in the bicycle master plan, and this is one, I think it really deserves it. To have a side path on one side and bikeable shoulders along both sides of the road. So we're going to move to staff recommendations. The first one is that we recommend that the shoulders be widened to at least four feet to provide bikeable shoulders per, per the standards that we now apply. The second recommendation is to reduce the posted speed to twenty-five consistent with the, the essentially the target speed. That is defined in the Complete Streets Design Guide for the street type. And and potentially also to update some of the design elements along this design based on the lower speed. Certainly, that could be some design standards related to to curvature, site distance. But also relates to the ability to provide raised crosswalks if the traffic coming. Regulations are modified. Recommendation three is to provide a pedestrian refuge on the, the west side of. MacArthur Boulevard between Oberlin Avenue and the Clara Barton Parkway ramp. It's a small little area, but we definitely feel like there needs to be a refuge to provide two separate crosswalks instead of one very long crosswalk. The fourth recommendation is, this is a general recommendation we provide pretty much on all mandatory referrals is that where the side path crosses driveways. You should maintain the side path elevation across the driveway as opposed to stepping it down, which is the way it's been done in the past. And if you have issues due to proximity to the road, you should pull the side path away so that you can make the transitions with the appropriate grade. Recommendations five is that high visibility raised crosswalks with median refuges where, where feasible. Should be provided at the following four locations, Mohican Road, the access to the Mohican Swim Club. While Hold, Hold, Hounding Road and Maryland Avenue. And all of these are proposed high visibility crosswalks. Our recommendations basically say that they should be raised as well. And as I mentioned, there may have to be some work in terms of the traffic calming regulations to make that possible, but it's still our recommendation. Recommendation six, it's a lot of text, but basically the intersection of MacArthur with Sangamore Road and Matticat. That there is a one, one, there's, there's, this intersection doesn't have crosswalks on all four legs. And so the eastbound leg needs a crosswalk because it does connect on the, on, on that side to a, to a continuing sidewalk. So we think that's a very important. But in addition. You know, this is going to be a connection between MacArthur Boulevard side path. And the Capital Crescent Trail and the Little Falls Stream Valley Park. And. When the American Legion Bridge improvements get constructed as part of the Ops Lane Project. This potentially could provide another connection from Virginia. To get, to get, you know, in into Montgomery County and into DC. So the, the level of bicycle traffic could increase significantly. And this intersection has very inadequate corners and, you know, there are two crosswalks are needed to cross through this intersection. So we're recommending that, you know, certainly from a long range perspective. That DOT look at ways to potentially eliminate the, the channelized right turn. That now occurs when you're going outbound on MacArthur and you want to continue on to Sangamore Road. It's pretty much like a slip lane. And it's great for cars, but it just means the bicycles have to cross bicycles and pedestrians have multiple threats that have to cross twice. And it is a yield condition, so if there would be a way to eliminate that slip lane, that would be great. And so that's the recommendation, the recommendations there. Recommendation seven is that also at this intersection, wayfinding is needed. As part of this project to really provide side path users. You know, information about the connection to the trail, the two trails, the Capital Crescent and the Little, the Little Falls Stream Valley Trail. From an environmental impact perspective, we just have some lingering questions. That we'd like the applicant to address in their response. About the approach to limiting environmental impacts. This is a pretty sensitive corridor, you know, along Potomac River. And so we just hope that, that added information that they can respond to. And finally, the last comment is just that we appreciate DOT sharing information with us. We just ask that they continue sharing with us after the mandatory referral process through deconstruction so that we are aware of the schedule. And we can also monitor. How the design conforms to the responses that are given. By the applicant in response to the plenty more comments. And with that, that concludes my presentation and I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I would see if our friends at DOT or their consultants have anything to add. But I did want to ask just a couple of questions about the connection to. Not just the Capital Crescent Trail further south, but a little bit further north. In the vicinity of the intersection with Cabin John Parkway. We've built a trail in Cabin John Park that extends all the way almost to MacArthur. And I wonder if. You could talk about if you're prepared to discuss the connection to the CNO Canal from MacArthur at that location. But is Dan Sheridan there? Or anybody from?
Good morning, yes, I am.
Hi there, how have you been?
Good, thanks, how are you?
Great, great to see you. You have anything you want to add to this staff presentation?
No, I will, I'll just say briefly that. You know, it's extremely constrained corridor. Very couple very unique things with the MacArthur Boulevard being the Corps of Engineers and the, their aqueducts underneath. And the coordination with that. And also the, you know, coordination with the natural resources, so. And I, I don't, I am not prepared to talk about your question. I'm not sure, I don't know that, I don't know if somebody Steve could bring it up or something early. Is it within the corridor of this segment? Or is it outside the connection to? The CNO Canal?
Well, the, what, what I'm saying is that for a long time, we've had a trail that basically. Extended through most of Cabin John Park along that stream valley. You know, you get, you can get access at various points. There's like a parking area, used to be sort of the southern terminus was effectively around Seven Locks Road. There's always been a sort of people's choice trail in that area to the, to the further south. Meaning, you know, the kind of roughly the segment that runs between just north of four ninety-five. Down to the area around MacArthur and, and, you know, we have a, a sort of a, what's a nominally separate park there, right? A lot that has frontage along MacArthur, right? So what I'm suggesting is that because we have formalized that connection. And it's, you know, it's much easier for hikers, mountain bikers, et cetera. To, you know, transit all, you know, the, the full extent of that corridor along the stream valley. And, you know, with the terminus being right there along, you know, in the, in our parking lot, which is right next to MacArthur. It would be maybe worth taking a look at. Providing, making sure that access is safe and convenient from that location. You know, to MacArthur and down to the CNO Canal. Because, you know, that would allow people who are hiking or biking or whatever to get. You know, access to up and down the CNO Canal and on and back and forth up into Cabin John to some of those neighborhoods. And you have, you know, a number of people who, you know, want to take a longer loop through and could take better advantage of the, to, by connecting those things. That's all I'm saying. So I guess my comment would just be if you could take a look at that and see if while you're doing this. you're doing this project, to think about, you know, safe crossing and access to the, between the Sea No Canal and the Cabin John Trail that we've, that we've built, which might involve, you know, people using a piece of this new facility you're building, or it might just involve crossing MacArthur at that location. I don't really, I don't really know. I don't have a, you know, theory here of how, what the best way to do that is, but I'm just suggesting if you could take a look at that, that might be a good time to do it.
Sure.
Mr. Chair, so I have a map on the screen, and I guess I'm wondering, do you want me to zoom in to the section around the Aqueduct Bridge?
Yeah, sure.
All right.
Yeah, so you see, yeah, I think you can see what I'm talking about. Okay, where that says Cabin John Park Trailhead. It used to be that there were, that trail, it existed, but, and it went north, you know, through the stream valley up to Seven Locks Road, I believe, or there, you know, there's a, or there's a parking lot area up at Seven Locks Road, and there's kind of an intermediate segment which is still being improved. But until recently, it was really kind of not particularly accessible or attractive to try to go up and down that corridor, as more people from the neighborhood were using these People's Choice Trails back there to kind of take their daily constitutional or walk their dog or whatever. So we've kind of made, formalized that connection, improved it, made it more sustainable, and so there's more traffic in that area on foot and on bicycle, even though it's a dirt trail, it's not a paved, paved trail. So what I'm suggesting is that now that you can sort of get access all the way and up and down that Cabin John quarter, I mean, all the way from even north of Tuckerman, all the way down to here, that it would be maybe an appropriate time to look at what is the access across MacArthur, down MacArthur to the Sea No Canal that would be safe and attractive.
I would, I will certainly work with your staff to take a look at that. I think it's a little bit outside this scope, but we have, you know, other bikeways program or things that we can look at and to look at it, and then if it makes sense to add it into this project, you know, we're certainly open to that.
Okay, great. I had some other questions, but I want to yield to other planning board members if they have something they want to say.
Go ahead. I had a quick question. So I saw the recommendation for lowering the speed limit, and I think that's a great idea. Two questions, has that process started? What does that look like? And then the other thing is, I think, just given my own experience here, you know, you either have people who are very much aware of the constraints and the kind of the curvature of MacArthur Boulevard and drive slowly, and then you have other kinds of people that have no idea what they're doing and they're going way too fast. So it seems like it's a, it's a good corridor to have speed cameras as well, the confluence of pedestrians and bikes, you know, can make for a dangerous situation. We obviously know that there was a fatality here a couple of years ago. So what are we doing to do that, to kind of address those speeding issues? And I think, you know, how are we prioritizing that?
So the recommendation to lower the speed limit from 30 to 25, we would have to coordinate that, and I'll start by saying that it hasn't been done yet, like, this recommendation is coming out now. But we can work with our traffic engineers to see if there are things that we can do within this project's scope to, like Steve has mentioned, the raised crosswalks. Now, there are some regulations related to those that have to be worked through, again with our traffic engineering colleagues. But we can also talk about the speed limit too and get their recommendations for, are there things that we can do that would get people closer to that 25 mile per hour target speed? I know Steve mentioned on other corridors, other parts of the same corridor, the speed is tending higher, again, like you mentioned, you know, people, some people know what they're doing here, and others are just, you know, exceeding the speed limit. So we can look and have our colleagues at traffic, you know, see if we can do such things as the raised crosswalks, or are there other treatments that we could do to reduce the speed?
Yeah, and even some signage, I mean, you know, slow down. I mean, I'm just trying to think of how to get people to really slow down here. I mean, this has been a problem area with people just not knowing what they're doing and kind of coming through this maybe as a way of getting around traffic, you know, because of other clogged areas. So whatever you can do to really get people to slow down would be very helpful. What about the speed cameras?
So speed cameras are operated by the police, and they have criteria for that, but we can bring it to their attention and see if it's possible. I know sometimes vertical and horizontal curvatures limit the places they can, can use them, but we can look into that, but it's not something that we control.
And I will mention that there is a bill now pending in the legislature that would, that would shift the authority from the police to, I guess, Montgomery County Government.
Okay.
And I assume that's DOT, and that's, that's one of the bills that we've been reviewing in planning.
Great.
So that is not been looked at yet, but we can take it back.
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I have two. I noticed that, number one, in the staff report, it indicated that Segment Two has been reviewed but not constructed. So my question on that is, is how is that being coordinated, the construction implementation of this for the three segments? That's number one. Number two, it says in the staff report again that there's going to be a public hearing to present the final design. So my question is, what's the form of that public hearing? Who's, is it going to be back at the planning board, or is it going to be simply through DOT? And then my final comment or question is that the staff recommendation that indicates a widening shoulder, what impact does that have on the environmental status of the project?
Commissioner Rubin, for the first question, I guess, maybe I can, I don't know if that was a misprint, but the Segment One is the section that we heard the mandatory referral about a year or so ago, and it hasn't been completed yet. Segment Two was completed, I think, in 2014 or 2015.
And I will answer the public hearing portion. So that public hearing is held by MCDOT. It's a formal public meeting where, you know, people can, or residents or can testify, and it's recorded, and then there's a public hearing officer that is assigned by the county executive or the director of Department of Transportation, and he makes a, you know, a final recommendation on, on the scope of the project. And then there are impacts to environmental by widening both the shoulder or the, or the path, so that's the balancing act that we're doing.
Okay, and that will be included in the final design to, you know, assuming that you're going to look at that to determine whether the recommendation can be done and what the impacts are going to be?
Correct.
Okay.
Jerry says she just some comments like, nice to see this project move along. I think it started maybe at MCDOT back in the 1980s. We did the segment on the west end, if you will, and the argument was, well, based on the speed, you could be in the road, but we did, there was arguments against putting in a side trail, and then again, the arguments, well, you had the canal trail as well. So there's three opportunities to bike through that area. One of the things that has come up on maybe the western segment, my grandson had done an Eagle project on one of the campsites, and parking has somewhat been restricted in certain places where people were trying to get to the park. So my question was, have you talked to the park service or their input one way or the other? That's kind of a question. Casey's comment about the connection to the Cabin John, we also, back in the day, worked on the Falls Road bikeway through Potomac and down to the MacArthur Boulevard site, and I know whether there's kind of connection through some of the parkland, but there's never, it's a curvy road, there's never been an attempt to put a bike shoulder in, perhaps, again, on the west side of that connection there. And then one of the recommendations from our staff, number four, which was the, where driveways cross the trail, is there, would there be a drainage issue? You mentioned, I think, raising the trail, is that something that would create a pooling of water on the land side or the private owner's side? And then I guess that's pretty, pretty much what I have, but it's nice to see the project moving ahead. So, you know, the park service, you may want to, if you haven't touched base with them, or maybe there is some input from them.
So we have had some high-level discussions about that portion going from essentially Old Angler's Inn up to Falls Road, and we, we think that we can have a conversation with the park service to continue it up there. Again, it's very high-level talks, but we are looking at that, and that does tie into there are the parking demands there, especially at that, where MacArthur and Old Angler's Inn, there are, you know, there's been no parking signs, but they just get, you know, ignored essentially, and so our Division of Traffic has done some interim measures to try to eliminate the parking alongside the road there. But it is, you know, the demand is very high and the parking is limited, so, you know, users, users are, you know, it's a, it's a continuing issue. As far as the driveways, we concur with that recommendation, and we will definitely have to look at the drainage at each one of those so that we're not, you know, trapping water there. But those, those could be handled in the final design and are ways, ways to do that.
Great, well, thank you, and again, congratulations on moving this ahead for a total package in this, this car.
I want to second what's been said about the speed limit, especially exploring automated speed enforcement. I had also just observed that ordinarily, I would give you a hard time about these substandard widths, but I get it that under the circumstances, it's really hard to fit in this situation, and I think it really will improve safety, in particular to have even a three-foot shoulder because as some of those images, like the one in front of us, show, there's places where there's really no shoulder, and you have cars just flying down and really getting impatient and no place to really safely pass, and three feet's not optimal, but at least it's possible to get out of the way if somebody's getting really, you know, trying to really put, you know, in a situation where you're just not feeling like you're safe because somebody is so impatient about trying to get around you on a bicycle. So I think this is going to be good, and, and I think it's worth underscoring, I think this is the probably best example where a dual facility is really justified because you do have a lot of bicyclists that want to have efficient movement over, you know, a distance up and down this corridor, sometimes to get to River Road or other points, you know, further north where there's sort of more wide-open spaces, and other times you get more, less experienced or more traffic-averse recreational cyclists who want to use that side path. And so I think that investment in two different facilities is really justified, especially since you can't really get an on-road facility that's optimal. It's important to have the option to be able to use the, the other one. And I mean, this is a little bit like if you have a frontage road and also a controlled access highway, they serve sort of slightly different purposes, but they're both really important. And lastly, I think it's, it's great to, you know, make the investment in upgrading the side path because, you know, it really is in need of repair, and in some cases, changes, you know, to its geometry because of, you know, the way that it was laid out originally is really not the best. So I think it's really a good project, and I appreciate that you're moving this forward. What's the construction schedule or funding situation for construction?
So it is fully funded for construction, and Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's FY '25 for construction?
Yeah, in, in the recommended CIP, it's listed as fall, fall 2025.
Okay, great, in our lifetimes, excellent. If there are no other comments or questions, could we get a recommendation to approve with the comments, including the additional comments about the connection to Cabin John, looking at automated speed enforcement? And if I missed anything else, somebody can tell me. Now would be a good time to.
Jerry says she's so moved as presented by the chairman.
And I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that's approved, see you all soon.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. Okay, then. Time for item five, Seneca Property Preliminary Plan and Site Plan, with Jonathan Casey among others, I believe.
Yes. All right. As the chair said, I am Jonathan Casey with Up County Planning. Today with me is Jeffrey Server, also with Up County. He is driving the PowerPoint. This is Seneca Property Preliminary Plan Number 1, 2021-0250, and Site Plan Number 8, 2021-0200, and this is item number five on your agenda. Mr. Server? Just to start off with, staff is recommending approval with conditions of the preliminary plan, site plan, and associated final forest conservation plan for the subdivision, which creates three lots for the construction of three single-family detached dwellings. Just to get the board oriented, the subject property is in Darnstown, just south of Darnstown Road, on the east side of Seneca Road. As it stands today, the property is an unrecorded parcel. It's 7.17 acres. Right now, it is vacant, maintained in grass. There are no environmentally sensitive features such as stream buffers on the site, however, there are a number of variance trees, and this particular property is part of the Darnstown Village Center, which is identified in the 2002 Potomac Subregion Master Plan. As far as the zoning, the subject property is in two zones, the RE2 zone as well as the rural village overlay zone. The overlay is the hashed portion shown on the map, and the predominant use on the east side of Seneca Road is single-family detached residences in R200 zone, and to the west is the RC zone. Slightly north in the overlay zone, there's some CRN as well as R200 directly to the north. And because the subject property is in the rural village overlay, a site plan is required for the construction of any new building.
Hi, good morning, members of the board. For the record, my name's Jeff Server. I'm going to jump in and talk about the proposal. The proposal for the subject property, as Jonathan had mentioned, is for three detached dwelling units to be located on three lots. The lots would be accessed via Seneca Road. Two of the homes would be accessed by a shared driveway, where the one on Lot 3 would have its own individual driveway. The homes would be serviced by public water, an individual septic. There is a 10-foot-wide shared-use path that is proposed along Seneca Road, and looking at the forest conservation, those are being met on-site, as shown in the dark green at the rear of the property. The master plan emphasizes the character of this area through the streetscape design, the open space and the landscape, and emphasizing the pedestrian and bicycle circulation is accomplished through the street design, which includes streetscape, traffic calming, and trail networks. The images to the right, at the very top, right, you can see what is envisioned by the rural village center overlay zone. As a part of the master plan, it was an 80-foot right-of-way, which included pretty extensive streetscaping with large canopy trees and sort of a dedicated hiker-biker trail. What the application is providing is what's shown in the lower right-hand corner, and it has a smaller right-of-way. However, it is including a shared-use path, which is shown within this area right here. And initially, the master plan did propose a bikeable shoulder. There are currently eight power poles that are located within that area, which prohibit being able to include the bikeable shoulder. So staff coordinated closely with Maryland SHA and MCDOT to include the 10-foot-wide shared-use path. The right-of-way does include enough width to one day include a bikeable shoulder if there is ever an opportunity to do so, but I'd also like to add that the shared-use path is also supported by the Complete Streets Design Guidelines. And lastly, looking at the site itself, the application proposes single-family detached dwelling units. Parking is located to the side of the dwelling units with a garage. The residential units themselves are arranged with a staggered pattern along Seneca Road, which helps to sort of maintain the rural village character, and they do provide a compatible scale and massing with variations in the facades and the finished materials and roof lines, all of which are complementary to some of the existing commercial and residential development within the area. I turn it back over to Jonathan to talk about forest conservation.
Yes, just to briefly touch on the forest conservation element of this plan, forest conservation is being met on-site, being a forest station area of 1.47 acres. A forest station will be at the rear of each lot, and it will be in a Category 1 conservation easement. Those plantings will also have a maintenance and management agreement for five years. There is a tree variance requested with impact to three trees and removal of seven trees. Mitigation is not required for the trees being impacted but retained. However, mitigation planting is required in the amount of 26 trees for the trees being removed. The variance tree mitigation plantings are highlighted in green on your screen. As you can see, they've been distributed throughout the property as well as added along the right-of-way to add additional character. As discussed in the staff report, the adequate public facilities are adequate for this property. No traffic study was necessary. Frontage improvements are being provided consistent with the master plan, and each property would be served by public water and private septic, which has been evaluated by DPS staff, as well as a stormwater management concept, which has been approved, and fire access and water supply is also adequate. This application does generate a single tier-one utilization premium payment for schools for the Northwest High School. Not going to go in detail on the preliminary plan findings, because those are laid out in the staff report. I just did want to mention that this preliminary plan is consistent with the master plan, and it meets all requirements of the RE2 zone as well as the rural village center overlay zone.
I'm going to jump in real quick and just discuss the site plan findings. The application does conform to the preliminary plan findings and requirements, as well as the master planning Complete Streets Design Guide. The single-family detached units are compatible with the surrounding existing development and does meet all the site plan findings and requirements for the RE2 zone and the RVC overlay zone. At this time, staff has not received any correspondence from any of the surrounding neighbors, and in conclusion, staff recommends approval of preliminary plan number 1, 2021-0250, and site plan number 8, 2021-0200 with conditions. Thank you very much.
Okay. Does the applicant want to add anything to that before I turn to staff for questions, or do you just want to wait and see what the planning board has to say? I assume we've got a few folks from Kim Engineering and Marty Mitchell from SPI Seneca LLC, who I take it is the developer.
Mr. Chairman, we concur with the staff's report, and if there's any questions from the board, I'll try to answer those questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Are there questions or comments on the board?
Jerry Sessi, just as you come into this village, the speed goes to 30 miles per hour, I believe. Coming up this road with the new development, is there a sign adjustment required there? I'm not quite sure where it is, but whether this area would be included in the 30 mile an hour zone in the village?
To be honest, I...
Yeah. If you could just check, yeah.
Yeah, we can look into that. That's not something we typically look at for state highways, but if there's a speed adjustment...
Yeah, on Seneca Road, more so than, yeah, on that one, which is a state highway, but, yeah, whether that sign needs to be adjusted.
Yeah, I can reach out to SHA and...
Yeah, great.
Have them look into that.
Great, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? I can say that I appreciate getting that 10-foot shared-use path in there in lieu of the bikeable shoulders, and I think that looking to the Complete Street Design Guidelines is really helpful in the absence of a master plan recommendation that will work for this project. So thanks for your attention to that, and thank you to the applicant for your cooperation in getting a safe bike pedestrian facility incorporated into this project. Is anybody ready to make a motion?
Yeah, Jerry Sessi, I'll make a motion approval with the conditions identified.
So first, the preliminary plan?
Preliminary plan, yes.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? That's approved. And the site plan?
Yeah, move approval of the site plan with the conditions.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? That is...
Are there any resolutions on this?
I don't think we have a resolution. No approval, no resolution here. We'll get that soon. Okay, that wraps it up. Thanks very much. We'll see some of you in a minute for item six, which is the Fairland and Bricks Chaney Master Plan Briefing on Community Engagement. Okay, we are back and ready for item six, which is a briefing on the community engagement that's been done so far on the Fairland and Bricks Chaney Master Plan, and for that we have Philip Estes, Smilla Jackson, Don Ziegler, and maybe others yet to be named. And for that, we have Philip Estes, Molly Jackson, Don Ziegler, and maybe others yet to be named.
Hi, good morning.
Hello, we see your slides. We see you, we hear you, and we see your slides. So that's, you know, three for three. And there's Molly, too.
Good morning.
Hi.
Good, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good morning, planning board members. I'd like to first begin with a note about our strategy and philosophy for community engagement. Our overall approach is to invite meaningful dialogue from all residents and community stakeholders to seek out historically underrepresented communities and their viewpoints, and to always communicate in clear terms and plain language. We also will provide and have provided multiple opportunities and formats to engage, and we'll continue meeting with the community to provide meaningful feedback. The Fairland and Brigs Chaney team has been meeting with and listening to a variety of stakeholders, including residents, neighborhood groups, business owners, developers, service providers, officials, and staff. A lot of interested stakeholders. Since May of 21, a range of ongoing engagement efforts, both in-person and online, have been used to gather the concerns, ideas, and aspirations of residents. The report before you today is a result of this effort. So we're really excited to discuss what we've done so far, to share our insights and present our data-driven approach we took to analyzing stakeholder feedback. Next slide, please. But first, just a quick recap of the last time we were before the planning board. You may recall, it was last April when we presented the scope of work, which of course includes the elements of study, community engagement, and communications plan, plan boundary to update this portion of the 1997 Fairland master plan. This is a corridor-focused plan following the framework of Thrive Montgomery's three pillars of economic health, equitable communities, and environmental resilience. Our core ideas and approach to the master plan are found actually in the forward-looking policies in Thrive Montgomery. Some of the key goals include complete communities and corridor growth. So building off of Thrive, we're examining ways to make the community more walkable with a greater variety of uses so that we provide as many services and amenities as feasible within this community. We're also looking at ways to promote economic development, job growth throughout the corridor, and there is a great emphasis on racial equity and social justice to help rectify any past discriminatory policies. Now, housing, we're all very familiar with the housing supply gaps and the pressure to find opportunities for more housing across the county. And the only way to reduce the gap is to build more housing and preserve existing affordable housing that we have. So that is one of our core ideas with this plan. Also, the flash plus rapid transit line. With the BRT now operational, we are looking at ways to maximize development opportunities around the three station areas and improve access from within the neighborhoods to transit. We're also looking at planning for people and prioritizing great design, the arts and culture, improving quality of life for residents, which you'll hear is an important aspiration for residents. The Fairland area is a diverse community where multiple languages are spoken, so celebrating that diversity is an important aspect of this plan, the process, and eventually its policies. So these are some of the core ideas we're looking at. Among others, the map you see on the screen here shows the plan boundary, which includes the three BRT stations at Tech Road, Brigs Chaney Road, and Castle Boulevard. Route 29 is the spine of the plan. And included are several major employers, including the Seventh Day Adventist headquarters, both Verizon Properties, the 60-acre auto mall, and the Brigs Chaney Marketplace. The Brigs Chaney neighborhood north of Brigs Chaney Road is also included, as well as Fairland Recreational Park. Next slide, please. And next up is Molly Jackson, who will begin the overview of the engagement report.
Thanks, Philip. Good morning, everyone. For the record, my name is Mollie Jackson, but most people call me Molly, same person. Before you is one of the things that we tried to emphasize throughout the engagement period, which has been throughout the pandemic. So we've been doing this effort with the restriction of COVID. But we have been trying to keep our distance, be safe, keep everyone else safe while maintaining contact with folks. Well, you see here some images that we took while we were at community-led events, both the East County Hub event, which, which Jeru is being shown in the bottom left-hand corner, and the Unity Thunder Day event, which is the upper left-hand side of the screen, where we engaged in real dialogue with real people. Our main focus for attending these events was to eliminate as many barriers to entry as possible. We were meeting people wherever they were with their understanding of planning. We were having real conversations with folks and connecting them to the resources that they needed most, building working partnerships and a social network. Next slide. So this image kind of shows you what we've been up to since we last saw you. We launched, we launched this effort right after getting approval for the scope of work with the Spring Speaker Series. Speaker Series is, is a tradition that we have in, in the planning department, but I think it was the first time that we actually used it to, to springboard an, an active master plan. And we titled this speaker series, "Community Conversations in Fairland," and a number of you have participated in it in, in speaking, most notably Commissioner Tina Patterson for hosting one of these, which is the last and the third event, which was grassroots advocacy on community green space, mastering the art of community collaboration. The first session was really just new discoveries on sacred ground. We paid homage to some local pioneers, and the second session was the importance of people-first transportation planning. The emphasis was around storytelling, again, having real conversations. And we used a lot of the, the partnerships that we were able to build in the coordination process to, to, to move forward with our efforts, whether it be in the listening sessions, attending community events, being invited to attend community events, to the tune of, we attended actually six community-led events, or five community-led events, and we hosted one on our own. And so it was, it was with the help of some of the speakers that you saw on the Spring Speaker Series, on the panels that you saw, that gave us the insight of which community events to attend and/or when, when they were available to be a part of the listening sessions. We invited, we continued to maintain this, this network throughout the entire process. Some of the things that I wanted to kind of emphasize around this schedule is that, yes, we were able to attend community events. Notably, we have 19-plus partnerships that we continue to maintain in our everyday canvassing effort, which produced the most of the data that you'll see today, which is 544 in-person interviews. We also did a number of surveys. Of course, there was four listening sessions. The pedestrian audit, which is the community-led event that we hosted. For the Fall Speaker Series, I also wanted to just kind of run through the titles of the Fall Speaker Series, which were, the first session was around parks, recreation, places to play. All of this happened in November. In equitable community. In equitable community, a vibrant economy, and a healthy environment was the second session. Mobility, equitable infrastructure was the third session, and the last was around food, the topic of food. I think when we revisited our, our takeaways from the fall session, and we partnered with Story Tapestry, which was brought to us by the former commissioner, Nadi Fana Gonzalez, who put us in touch with Story Tapestry, we were able to create experiences that transcended the computer screen. And we have a number of pending stakeholder meetings that we will be scheduling between now and hopefully before March. And we are constantly and continuously listening to what the people have to say. We, and as Philip has pointed out, we've, we've done that in a number of ways. We're at the point of meeting one-on-one with people, which is what we're calling stakeholder meetings. Next slide. So for our everyday canvassing effort, this takes a village of people to happen. And it is, it is one of the best ways to meet people where they are, because you're meeting them right at their doorstep. And we knocked on at least 3,850 doors, and there were at least 62 volunteers that helped us with this effort. And like I said before, it produced the bulk of the data that you're going to see before you today. Next slide, please. We want to take a minute to show you some of what we were hearing and, and, and pay homage to the volunteers who also happen to be residents of the Fairland and Brigs Chaney community. I'm going to play a short, brief clip for you now of a resident who was a canvasser.
I actually answered one of the letters that was put on my door by a canvasser, and when I read it, I was like, wow, this is really touching to me. It's touching my heart because I felt like during the first phase of the camp, of the actual planning of Montgomery County, I wasn't asked any questions, no one invited me, and I said, I'm not going to let this opportunity go by without me being actively involved in this process.
As you can see, it wasn't just knocking on doors, it was about reaching people and developing these relationships, as I was saying. And, and when you develop relationships, you have real conversations with people. And so we just wanted to highlight some of the comments and some of the quotes that we heard that we use as motivation to kind of guide us through this process and making intentional efforts to continue to reach people where they are. We have both negative or criticism, I should say, criticism of existing systems. And what we discovered is that there's the appearance or the perception of, of lost time when it comes to participating in, in this effort. So we wanted to make the people feel like this was worth participating, that, that this, that this was an event that they didn't want to miss. This was a historical moment for them and their community, and it was their plan, and that we were just helping to make it come to fruition. So active members in the community, the transition between us and them, but just making it us. Next slide. And so in reaching people where they are, we wanted to develop visual and graphic tools that made them feel like they were being heard and listened to. So what you see is an example of a jam board, which has been used by other master planning teams, and some of the sample questions that we asked to prop breakout sessions during the listening session. We also developed a composition book that could even either be completed within the session or hopefully sent to us after the session, which also got them drawing and thinking about the importance of art and what even doodling could do for, for their thinking process and creating new ideas for the community. In person, we played games with people, and it reached even the young ones. What you see in the bottom left-hand corner is a young, a young future planner of America, and he is, he is casting his boat with his fake tax dollars that we, we gave to people to spend. And so this became a family kind of activity where moms would bring their children and show them the importance of putting their tax dollars towards housing or the environment or arts and culture. So we had six different buckets that they were able to spend their money in. One was arts and entertainment, jobs, housing, transportation, parks, and environment. And we got rave reviews about this, especially at the, at the Burtonsville Day event, because we had the, most people show up for the Burtonsville Day event. Although it was outside of the plan boundary area or the, the master plan boundary area, we still, we still had a lot of people who either lived or worked in the Fairland and Brigs Chaney community, so. That was a draw. I think our station was one of the most popular stations I've heard. We, we saw a number of familiar faces, including Commissioner or Chairman Casey Anderson, and some of the retirees came out and supported us as well. So it was a fun event. We have lots of great memories from it. Next slide. So we want to transition from reaching people where they are into what we heard, what we actually heard as a result of doing some of these activities, planning these events, attending community-led events, and speaking to people in person. We are showing you the demographics of the everyday canvassing right now, and what you can see right now are two different things. The use of our marketing materials to appeal to a broader audience so that we are truly being inclusive and welcoming, welcoming different cultures, oh, Spanish, English-speaking, Spanish-speaking, and, you know, all, we have five different dominant languages in this community. So we wanted to make sure that the residents knew that they were welcome, even if they weren't, if their primary language was not English. But most of the people who participated, participated in the everyday canvassing effort were black and brown. Next slide, please. And so during the, the virtual experience, I also want to indicate that we, we noticed a trend in the types of audiences that attended the different types of events. For the Listening Series, the Fall Listening Series, we realized that these virtual experiences were actually more appealing to older folks. And it's probably because they have jobs and they're busy and they're, you know, they have very limited capacity when it comes to time and maybe even resources. But we had the most participation from people who were either 45 or above for the listening sessions, and younger folks who were less than 45 years old were participating in the in-person events and the everyday canvassing effort. We had a lot of people volunteer who were young that wanted to go door-to-door and knock on people's doors and have conversations and help us with this effort. For the Fall Listening Sessions, we had about 400, I mean, 104 people attend, which we gave a quick polling to at the very start of each listening session. We did a quick poll and an icebreaker to jump right into facilitating dialogue. And of those 140, 104 attendants, I keep wanting it to be more, of those 104 attendees, 47% participated in the quick polling survey. I think that's about consistent with what the Downtown Silver Spring group had, had realized, too. So there's something about, about half of the participants are actually doing the polling versus some people who kind of maybe were just listening in. Next slide, please. So I want to introduce one of our great team members who has been helping us to interpret the data and to analyze the data and to organize the data, and she's going to kind of go through some of the behind-the-scenes things that happen that most people wouldn't realize. But Yiling Li is an intern with Up County, and she is amazing, let me just say that. And I just wanted to give her an opportunity to kind of go through the data and, and, and let her, her face be seen in this, too, because most times she's behind the scenes. Lynn?
Yes, thank Mollie for the input, and thank you for introduction. Here, I'm going to give a short recap about what the people we have listened from, the Listening Series. So as Mollie have mentioned before about how all the people who joined the Listening Series participate in the poll and indicate what's their social background. So half of them were aged about 45 to 60, is comparatively a little bit older than the people we have approached in the canvassing. And also, half of them were African-American, with 30% of them were Caucasian, 9% of them were Asian and Pacific Islander, and 9% of them were Hispanic. The majority of people are from the DMV area and also ISCO, with 50% of them having an immigrant background. 73% of people joined the Listening Series using the surveys and also shop in the planning area, with half of them actually live in the planning boundary. Next slide, please. Oh, just to emphasize, the team will also keep up with this level of diversity through all the visioning, refining, sharing face. And here, we're going to explain how we process all the data we have received and to have an overview about what's community's major concern. In total, the team have received 544 interview from the everyday canvassing, 91 from the online questionnaire, and the meeting notes from the four community listening series. The team have first reviewed all the test information and clustering according to the policy goal The team have first reviewed all the test information and clustering according to the policy goal we have proposed from the scope of project. However, after the first review, we identified as many issue was hidden in each policy goal. Therefore, we transfer all the information to a software and qualitative analysis software called Envivo to have a closer view, understanding about what are the issue hidden in each policy goal. Next one, please. So here just an illustrate, here's here just an example to shows how many theme we have identified. So just simply on the this policy goal of transportation, the team have identified thirteen different issue after the second and third review of the community's feedback. Overall, this approach helped the team to have a closer understanding about communities, communities desire and need, but also overview about what's community's priorities and or other overlooked issue. Next one, please. Here, we're going to explain what we have heard after this three review of community's feedback. So the map in the right illustrate where are all the feedback coming from. And then chart on the left, it's ranking from high to low for the community's priority concern according to the policy thing. The top three are park recreation, transportation, and housing. While public safety and environment are the issue that was relatively fewer concern from the community feedback. And here, I'll hand over to Maling again.
Thank you, Lynn. Appreciate you. Um, so I just want to spend a second on this slide so you can uh really digest the information that's before you. Um, like Lynn said, we're trying to point out to you where the comments were coming. So we're locating and um giving you an idea of how many comments were coming from different parts of um the area, the master planning area. And we're also highlighting the fact that those conversations that we had in person, we were meeting people at their door, translated into data, actual data points then to to bring about we call our top policy themes. Um, what you're seeing is not only the canvassing data, but you're seeing the data from the listening sessions. And you're also seeing the data from um questionnaires. So pay attention as I'm going through the rest of these, because I'm going to go through each one of the policy themes. Um, pay attention to the to the colors, because you'll see that, you know, uh, blue is an indication of everyday canvassing. The green is an indication of the surveys, the online surveys, non-facilitated, just prompt questions that people were were answering. And the gray is the listening sessions, uh the conversations that we had in the listening sessions. Of course, what I said before is the bulk of the data came from everyday canvassing. But we have consolidated everything into into just one data source so that we can analyze it as a whole, as a collective. Next slide. So um one of the things I also want you to pay close attention to while I'm going through these um themes is the quotes. We wanted to personalize each one of these um themes, because although the data is what it is and um we we are kind of summarizing what we've heard in a in a very data-driven way, we also want to highlight actual words that people were saying to us as a as a way to kind of um give you insight on some of the things, the complicated conversations that kind of resonate when we're going through and analyzing the data. These are things that we're considering um at the same time. So one of the top themes um that people enjoy, but that they have a lot to talk about because they know about it, um, are parks and recreation. And the emphasis um of what we heard is around um availability of recreational facilities and engagement of the community, both of youth, adults, but children. People wanted to talk about how their children are uh using the parks and and nee- in need of places to play uh like soccer fields or basketball courts. And even access to the pool that's in um the Fairland Regional Park on the Prince George's County side and not on the Montgomery County side, but that they are still um very aware of uh the Fairland Recreational Park. And and they, they like what's happening, but I think they would like to engage in it more. And I think um the use of the park is good for the community as a whole. Um, so the quote on the bottom right side says, "The Fairland Recreational Park is probably the most underrated park in the county. It has a great trail system, which we heard about quite frequently, and a whole bunch of other recreational facilities." Um, I think the the missing thing about Fairland Recreation is really about engagement, um, having programming and and allowing people to access um parks um and having a reason to go there. Next slide, please. Um, so of course, housing is on everyone's mind. And you can see that the bulk of uh the conversations for housing were were had when we were doing our door-knocking and our canvassing effort, when we were meeting people at their doorstep. So of course, um, meeting people at their house, we're probably gonna hear a lot about their living situation, um, how they're enjoying their living situation or how they think it might need to be improved. I will note that most of the, um, all of the data from the everyday canvassing effort was done by um apartments and multifamily dwellings. And so there are going to be things that are traditionally um discussed when you live with um more people. Um, things like um property management or sanitation and noise and needing to things to be fixed around the house, those things come up quite frequently. But one of the things that um we have heard across the board as 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 um a significant and um probably the most talked about thing um is the cost of housing and affordability. So we get into conversations of um of higher rent and having to pay for your your housing and not having money discretionary income to do other things. Um, next slide, please. But um, a lot of people also discussed the character of the community, which 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 um these images are presenting, a lush, green community where um, you know, either multifamily units are surrounded by trees um back into existing trails or um back into existing recreational facilities. So uh they, while they do have access to green space and to the parks, um, that is walkable, most people are using the walking trails, um, the trail network as more leisurely activity and less on a day-to-day kind of get-to-work. Um, use their bike, use the trail to get to work uh kind of system. So, next slide. So transportation is an issue for this community. We talked mostly about transportation in the listing sessions. I want to read the quote which says, uh, "Would like to see public transit expand in terms of locations and also reduce uh wait times and journey times so that they can rely on it more for transportation instead of using a car," which is very insightful, because um I want to say that this community is still a suburb. And so people, the primary use is uh in a car by themselves. And um this plan hopefully will seek to increase the number of of riders that use the BRT stops, but also the regular metro bus um routes. Uh, we've heard that going south is not a problem. It's it's um easier to go south than it is to go north or to the west. Next slide. Um, one of the events that we hosted was a pedestrian audit. And if you're not familiar with the pedestrian audit, it's basically uh walking, walking the property, walking a particular site and identifying where there could be improvements or things that you actually like, things that are helping you along the way. So we hosted this event in October, which is consistent with the state initiative for the October event. And that was done with intention. There were about twenty-six people that intended that that attended this event. And basically, the purpose of this was to identify issues that negatively impact pedestrian safety, comfort, and um accessibility. It was to create, we're using it to create a pedestrian-friendly community for all people, regardless of ability, age, gender, race, ethnicity, or other forms of human indifference. So um since, just to kind of give you some context, but in a span of four years, um, the area that we walked and I'll and I'll highlight it because you're seeing it to the upper upper right side of this slide here, um, the area has has um had about a hundred and nine crashes since two thousand and fifteen. Um, so we picked about eight different stops along the route. And the route we took was, we started, the meeting place was the rec, the East County Regional Services Center. We walked behind the Regional Service Center, along Robie Road for a short distance. But the the most, most of our trip was done along Bridge Chaney Road. And we had eight different stops along that route to identify um certain things that we thought they might identify as um needing to be improved. Next slide. So this kind of shows you some of the questions that were asked. This is not all of the questions that were asked, but these are kind of the most uh the ones that we discussed the most. So which features um assisted pedestrians? And what things, what top three things would you identify as needing to be improved? Um, so the things that we heard were crosswalks needed to be painted. Um, so there's a maintenance issue. I want to um also mention that during this event, we, we invited MC DOT and we invited SHA. And we were walking down the street and we noticed that the sidewalks were being intruded upon by the vegetation, the trees, and some overgrown vegetation. And as a result of doing this pedestrian audit, um, MC DOT jumped on it right away. They added uh the sidewalks that needed um some improvements, some maintenance involved to their to their schedule. And so as a result of this pedestrian audit, uh we are, we're hopefully going to be seeing less vegetation interrupting sidewalks and preventing people from from using the sidewalks and and more so um being in the street. Um, we created a video around this. Um, if you haven't had a chance, I highly encourage you to go to our our webpage and to look at the video, because it's, it's got a lot of pertinent questions and a lot of pertinent uh comments that we received uh during this session. Next slide, please. So um we, we have just a few more slides, so bear with us. But um the next topic is around culture, equity, public services. Um, and some of the things that we heard, uh, the top concern was education uh and needing a better quality of um education experienced in in the schools. Again, of the bulk of this data came from our everyday canvassing. People wanted to talk about their kids. They wanted to um let us know that um that they need more activities, they need more ways to be involved, so it keeps them out of trouble. Um, they wanted more resources for um local businesses and future entrepreneurs, um, training activities, things like that. Next slide. And so this kind of leads us to a conversation about economics. And we know there's a direct tie between education and jobs and economics. Um, so this, this point, we wanted to kind of expand upon that and talk a little bit about uh what we heard for as far as education is concerned, which will be the next slide. But I'll stay here for a second, just to focus on the fact that the top economic concerns really hint at needing um more competitiveness in the retail market and having better access to healthy food. Um, at the food listening session, we heard a lot of um comments from some of our stakeholders, some of our partners that we're working with, including the Montgomery County Food Council, saying that um there's things that we can do on the grass, on the, on the ground level, at the land use level, that allow for a healthy food system. So we're looking actively lis- listening to those folks who can help us to um assess our existing conditions, maybe enhance what we have in place for the Fairland and Bridge Chaney community, so that there is that access to healthy food. Next slide, please. So the top education about education has everything to do with the quality um children and youth programs and the need for um more resources and access to resources. Although we would never make a, um, this is not a a a theme in the master plan, we are conscious that the faculty, the staff, the students, anyone who has any involvement with the school is also possibly living in the community. So we're looking for the quality of their lived experience when we're talking to them about um education and and what they want. Next slide, please. Yeah, so in addition to um uh so as a part of the the conversation around economics, let I give you some insight, a little bit of um what the existing character looks like today, uh, both with the Verizon site, and that's the bottom left-hand corner of the slide, and some of the local businesses, and which is the bottom right-hand side of the slide, as well as the top. Uh, the top three images are of the Bridge Chaney Shopping Center and the middle image is of the Auto Mall. So all of these places, including a few other businesses, of obviously, this is just a sample, um, add to the economic health of Bridge Chaney and Fairland. Um, transportation is also a key component of economics. And so um as we improve the transportation systems and the education systems um and access to good food, um thereby increasing the health of the the um economic development for the future. Next slide, please. So um, the public safety was also a concern, and this is probably a result of needing more engagement for um younger people or or access to resources. Uh, when people are in need of resources or are in need of more engagement, um, you kind of s- see a spike in some, you know, um, some criminal behavior. But you, we have top, the top comments that we were received for public safety have everything to do with crime uh prevention, safety, um, that could be along the roadways, people getting injured along the roadways. Um, and and crime events, actual events that have occurred. Um, the images to the right kind of give you an idea of um some of the areas that we could um actually improve. And the BRT stop is, is really just access to the BRT stop, being able to travel along the sidewalks and things safely. Next slide. Um, and this is the final of the of the top themes, and then we'll wrap it up here. But environment um received more praise than it did uh criticism. We have fourteen comments that really um talk about environmental sanitation is what we titled it, or environmental quality, uh, most of which, again, came from everyday canvassing, so we were meeting people at their homes. Um, and so they were saying things like there was trash that needed to be picked up. Um, of course, uh, some, some people were emphasizing um air quality and things of that nature, um, having to do with the quality of the environment. Um, but for the most part, everyone was saying good things about uh having access to green space. Um, but I will say that some people were saying that it could be um more programmed and it could feel more like um a place, a destination for folks, which it doesn't necessarily feel that way right now. So next slide, wrapping it up here. We have kind of summarized these things into strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And um I'll just highlight a few on that you already know about, that this community is like most of Montgomery County, highly educated. Most people have their um high school degree, if not doctorate degree, um speak multiple languages. So um that also adds to the level of education that they're receiving. They're around different cultures. So there is this cultural awareness that may exist here that might not exist in other places. It has a great location, um, access to downtown Silver Spring, but also Route twenty-nine takes us straight up to Baltimore. So this corridor, this Route twenty-nine corridor is is an active um corridor. Um, and it's a great, it provides a great location for residents who are working towards the north or towards the south. Uh, of course, there's family-oriented and workforce development. You have the ability to age in place here, which we want to preserve, we want to um highlight. Um, some of the weaknesses are that they are within what we call our equity-focused areas. Um, there is no direct access to metro with hat, which has an economic impact on business and their employees or their staff. Um, commuters drive alone. We are hoping to improve some of that. Um, low income but high rents, you do still have in your um apartments, high rents, um, almost as as equivalent, or if not more, sometimes as as having your own mortgage. Um, there's a renters-to-housing uh mentality, so there's opposition, there's two different arguments, two different positions. Um, the opportunities that exist for this community, though, are that if and um if we're able to infuse the market with um high-end retailers or uh more competitiveness into uh the retail space, then um this could bode well for for residents of the community. There's active, there's advocacy um by the community already, trying to improve their living situation. Um, some of the threats that we see are the fact that there's um a lot of surface parking, interim uses, impervious surface um vacancies. Uh, next slide, please. And so we, we do this effort, this entire effort, everything that I've told you so far, which is a lot of work, um, not just me and Philip, though. I do, I I want to um, I take a second and acknowledge all of the people that um have helped with us, helped, helped us and the community to um to helped, helped us and the community to, um, to be able to provide and do this type of work. Um, of course, there's myself and Philip and Don. And there's also Lynn, thank you very much, um, um, Lisa Gavoni, uh, Catherine Nelson, Rachel Newhouse, Brian Crane, Roberto Duke, Ace Suebeck, um, Nicholas, uh, Holscum, Holscum, uh, and Pamela Swarich. Um, so with that being said, I want to open it up for any questions or comments that you have. Um, we do want to hear insights about what you think the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats are for this community. And anyone think that you think we should, we should be reaching out to, that we should be talking to. But that's it. And I'd ask that the, um, PowerPoint come down for a second so that, um, we can engage in a dialogue.
Thank you for that, um, presentation. Are there questions or comments from the planning board?
I had a couple of questions and comments. First of all, thanks a lot for the comprehensive presentation and the work that you're, that you're doing. I know it's so hard to do community engagement, uh, during a pandemic. And so you really have shown how to do it right. And I was particularly impressed when we did the pedestrian audit. Uh, and, you know, just to see how everyone came out, the feedback we got, and it sounds like you got some, uh, you know, remediation steps that also occurred as a result, which is always a win. So congratulations on that and, uh, great, great job. I had a couple of questions and there, there were a couple of things that struck me. You know, I grew up here. I lived here from nineteen ninety-one to, uh, two thousand and twelve. And I still have a home here and, uh, my parents live in East County in the Fairland area, right across from, uh, the Verizon Employment Center. But, um, so this is home and I'm very much aware of the history of the area, how it's changed over time, some of the challenges. I still am very much involved in, uh, the local civic over there and my parents' HOA. I used to be, um, in a, in a previous life, uh, doing pro bono HOA work in this area as well as doing mediations for, uh, DHCA. So I got to see all the various issues that many of the HOAs face in this area, and there's quite a few, as you know, uh, in many of these communities. So I'm very much in tune with what's happened here. And it's, it's an interesting story. You know, this, this entire section has seen so much change. You know, for the longest time, you know, the, there, this, this part of the county was, was looked upon as, uh, highly desirable and it was growing in the nineties. And many people looked at this corridor as a way to, uh, enjoy living in a relatively new community and then be able to commute into DC. But as we know today, Route twenty-nine is amongst the most congested, if not the most congested area in the entire, uh, uh, I think at one point, the entire state, it could take you almost over an hour to get to the Beltway and you could forget about going to the metro. When I lived here and I worked as legal counsel at the State Department, it would take me an hour and a half each way. Uh, in fact, I would actually drive to College Park, jump on the metro and then go into Foggy Bottom because that was really the only way to get into DC. And I found out many of my neighbors were doing the same thing. So that gives you an idea of, um, the traffic. But you know, with the advent of the inter-county connector, that, uh, caused a huge amount of disruption in this community. Then SHAs kind of, uh, you know, design and policy to basically try to move people as quickly through this area and, and try to eliminate, uh, some of the connections that we're trying to make today. And then of course, uh, Howard County and, uh, the development of Maple Lawn and Columbia, a lot of the growth occurring there. And then of course, a lot of growth occurring in Silver Spring. You had this entire section in the middle that, you know, was kind of affected. So there's a lot going on here, and I think for people who've lived through it, who've seen the changes occur, uh, one of the, uh, things that people have always said in this area is they would like to see more economic development. They would like to see more investment. They would like to see a vibrancy. And so one of the questions I had, and you kind of, it kind of was alluded to during the housing, um, presentation in terms of the canvassing you did. But, uh, can you break down, when you were doing your interviews, what percentage did you interview in terms of multifamily homes, townhomes and single-family homes? Do you have that data?
So the everyday canvassing effort was for the apartments only. We only did everyday canvassing for apartments because they tend to be the harder reached audiences. But really it's because, um, they have limited capacity sometimes and of course, um, so we don't have canvassing data for single-family homes or townhouses. All, one hundred percent of the data is for apartments.
Okay. And so I think we, we need to focus on definitely having, because this entire area is, uh, has a lot of different kinds of housing. And, uh, obviously from your, the data that you presented on the, uh, housing section, you could kind of see that many, as you alluded to, many of the issues that were being represented were definitely from a multifamily perspective. And that's extremely important perspective because as you correctly pointed, they are often underrepresented. That being said, this area does have a wide variety of stakeholders. And I just want to make sure that we are doing an evened approach with all the different, uh, constituents so we can truly say that our outreach is, uh, going towards, uh, every kind of owner, whether it's a renter, whether it's a, a person that owns a, a townhome or renting a townhome or re- uh, renting a single-family home. My, my parents have a, a single-family home that they rent out to a family and they've been renting, uh, out that home for the last fifteen years. There are a lot of renters who are renting, uh, in this area because, um, I understand there were some concerns about affordability. I would actually like to point out that this part of the county is probably, relatively speaking, one of the most affordable areas in the entire a- area. And in fact, that's why, uh, you know, we do see a higher level of, of diversity because, you know, especially if you're coming from a different country, this is one of the few places where you can start off with. We have a very vibrant, um, uh, a, a West African population here. We have, we see all sorts of different cultures that often make this their first kind of, um, uh, area where they're, where they're living. So I, I think it's important that we capture that, um, because I noticed, uh, with some of the data, the qualitative data that was being collected was definitely from, uh, one perspective. And I just want to make sure that we're capturing, uh, the entire, uh, area as a whole. Because this, you know, it's, this, this plan's going to be very challenging because, and I'm, I'm so glad we're doing it now, especially, uh, under this larger framework of racial equity. Because if you speak to a, a lot of the folks who've seen the, the, the change happen over, uh, the last few decades, the narrative you'll start to hear is that, um, we wish we had more investment. We wish Viva White Oak would go forward. We wish we had better transportation infrastructure. And so while some parts, uh, of the county may be concerned about, you know, too much growth or managing growth, uh, really the narrative for East County, in particular this area, is disinvestment. Uh, that there hasn't been as much investment. There hasn't been, um, a lot of local jobs. Many people that are, are living here are not working here. You know, many people would like to see, um, uh, a biotech corridor here. You look at a lot of the, um, buildings that are currently there, a lot of them are actually represented by Edge Realty. Uh, you see a lot of for lease signs. Uh, you know, I, I'd be curious to see what kind of, um, numbers we have on, on how much office space is available for leasing. So, um, continue your good work, but I would like to caution and I would like to see in the next time we do come together, can we get more qualitative data from, uh, all the different kinds of housing in this area? Because it is very diverse, as I mentioned, but continue the good work and look forward to more updates.
I also just wanted to mention that, um, so that you asked about everyday canvassing. So I just wanted to answer your question about everyday canvassing. But there were questionnaires, mailers, listening sessions where homeowners did attend. So it's, it's not that we don't have any data, uh, around single-family homes. Uh, we do have data, but, um, your question was about everyday canvassing. So I just wanted to clarify that we're everyday canvassing.
Okay.
And I, I let, um, my, my team jump in here too, if you'd like, um, to share more specific da- data points about, um, the questionnaire and, uh, the listening sessions when it comes to homeownership.
May- maybe it would be good to, uh, send, just send the board the, the questionnaire and any data that you've collected so we can just check that out at our, you know, when we're not sitting all around here talking during a planning board meeting. I, I for one would be really interested in get it, you know, just reading up and getting deeper into it. But maybe it would be better if you just sort of emailed that around and then the next time we have a work session or briefing, we can maybe engage it with the benefit of a little more specific knowledge of, uh, what you've, what you've, uh, produced as part of that work.
Um, oh, I'm sorry.
I mean, I didn't ma- I didn't ma- I didn't mean to cut you, I didn't mean to cut you off. I was just thinking like maybe rather than go into the specifics of your ser- survey right here and now, it might be, uh, convenient for everybody if we just, if you could, uh, provide that material and then, uh, we can be prepared next time to dive into it a little more.
Just a point of clarification. Um, so our staff report definitely includes, um, discussion about the actual sessions themselves. But I think what you're asking for is the specific demographic data for whether or not, um, homeownership was accounted for in, in our collection, correct?
Well, I, I, I for one would just like to see the, whatever the data set is that you've collected and tied to the survey. So, um, I don't know how much appetite anybody else has for getting into that level of detail, but just speaking.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll just jump in really quick, uh, Patrick Butler for the record. So yeah, just, uh, piggybacking on what Molly said. Uh, everyday canvassing specifically, we partnered with to do outreach to our hardest-to-reach community, which was the typically multifamily units. So that's what the everyday canvassing, uh, uh, portion focused on. The, the larger outreach, mailings, flyers, surveys, et cetera, went to single-family detached units, townhouse units, multifamily. I mean, we did, you know, a very concerted effort. So yes, the, and Chair, I hear you. The report, uh, does break it down that way. So we, we can get you data specific that, you know, maybe came in from the single families and townhouse units, uh, versus everyday canvassing, which focused on the multifamily. So, um, we, we, we can get you that information.
And I'm just, I'm just generally interested in whatever data you collected. So I'm, I'm not, it's not, I, I think the question that Parthop is asking, which is specific to housing types and demographics, that's also interesting. But my, my interest is just more general that I, I have kind of like a lot more, uh, tolerance for reading through that kind of thing than I think most people do. So I didn't want to make everybody else suffer through it. That's all.
Thank you. So just before we call this a clean, I would just want to remind you that this information is all attaching in the appendix with all the interview we have received. So if you will have interest in, they were, they were available.
Great. Uh, are there other comments or questions?
Yeah, I, I have one. Um, the, a couple of things that I've noticed, um, in, in the discussions that, that we've had. We, we've mentioned, um, Fairland, uh, Recreational Park. You've mentioned Howard County. You've mentioned, uh, and, and Commissioner Bruma talked about how many of, uh, he, he and his, um, uh, acquaintances or friends have commuted through to College Park as an easier. So I, I view this area as a crossroads, um, that, uh, also brings in Howard County and an interest in, um, in Howard County, both to the area and from the area. The same thing with, uh, Prince George's County. So I would like to know what kind of reach of outreach that you've done, not necessarily with the residents, but perhaps with your planning colleagues, both in, uh, Howard County, um, in their planning department and also in our, our sister agency, which is Prince George's County, um, to, to figure out maybe a broader view of this area, um, as, as I said, as a crossroads between, you know, with the three counties and, and how that might impact some of the recommendations moving forward and, and how you would look at the, how we would look at the area itself.
Sure. We, we definitely got, um, our sister agency involved early on. Um, and we've had conversations with parks and recreation, um, and specifically around Fairland and, uh, the Fairland Recreational Park because we share that park with them. And there are amenities that, um, the Fairland and Briggs-Cheney community uses on the Prince George's County side as, as well as vice versa. Um, so we still have some work to do with the actual touching base with planning department for Howard County and, um, the planning department on the side of Prince George's County. Uh, but we have, we have reached out to them. I think we just need to, um, keep reaching out to them, quite frankly. And, um, uh, we appreciate the comment though, because this is the insight that we're looking for. Um, more, more interest on, you know, branching out to the region. Uh, we are fully aware of that, most certainly, because a lot of what we found out is that, um, uh, folks are traveling outside of Fairland and Briggs-Cheney to go to work, um, and, and to have, uh, entertainment, whether it be in Laurel, whether it be in College Park, um, other areas, downtown Silver Spring, um, Howard County. Those travel up to, to Columbia to go to the mall or to see a concert or something like that. So we are very much aware of, um, the fact that people are leaving this area to do other things. Um, I will say that we've also partnered with the University of Maryland, which is in Prince George's County. Um, they have helped with, uh, a PALS program and to kind of highlight, um, some of our next steps. We, we'll, you'll be hearing about the work that we've done with, um, University of Maryland in our, in our existing conditions, a presentation, which, which will be coming up hopefully in, in April.
Yeah, uh, and Ms. Jackson. Yeah, you also made a comment about people going outside for entertainment. Uh, just anecdotally, my brother and sister-in-law have lived in Burtonsville since they were married and they've stayed in the same townhouse, uh, for close to forty years. Um, so their, and their children have all grown up there and gone to schools there. Um, they're now adults that, but they have been getting a lot of their entertainment. Um, they go out to dinner, they meet friends, mostly in Maple Lawn. Um, it's very convenient. It's new and it's developed. And so I'm very interested in, in the interconnection between, um, you know, Burtonsville has some incredible and, and that area has some credible opportunities, uh, for, you know, that kind of a growth and to tie it into perhaps that area of Howard County that's right on the border. So, and also the, the Laurel area is right there. It, you know, you're going down one ninety-eight and it connects very well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Patterson.
Tina, did you want to jump in?
I did. Thank you. Um, and good morning, Ms. Jackson. Good morning, team. Um, kudos on a, a, a very comprehensive presentation. Um, I wanted to let you know personally, I have heard from a number of people regarding your outreach efforts um, and that it's been positive feedback. I, I knew going, as you began this project, that there were several communities that you were going to reach out to. Um, some of them have been traditionally labeled as hard to reach or difficult to reach, either because of, um, demographics in, in terms of time of day that people were, but also language. And there's also some concern about having contact with what would be considered a quasi-governmental agency. So kudos to you. And again, I've heard from a number of people that, um, job well done. I wanted to ask you a question regarding one of the bullet points that I saw on the slide, and it's regarding the lighting on Briggs-Cheney Road, um, that it has been a problem and, and you brought, brought to our attention that it's still a problem. Do you know if there is any action that has been discussed by our sister agencies to address the, the lighting along Briggs-Cheney? And as you indicated, it is a public safety, um, concern, but it's also, um, a crime prevention, um, opportunity. So I'll pause there to, to hear what your answer is.
Um, I also want to kind of bring in, um, um, Chris, Chris Van Hollen, who I didn't mention in our team, but he's our transportation person. And, um,
Chris, Chris Van Hollen is now, uh, working for our transportation planning.
I'm sorry, not Chris Van Hollen. I'm so sorry. I know who you're referring to. And Austin, I'm sorry.
Senator who's not here today.
I'd be interested to hear what Chris Van Hollen has to say about all this, but.
No, I apologize. Um, I, I wanted to see if, um, you wanted to take a stab at this question, Chris, if, if you've heard anything about ongoing maintenance or anything having to do with lightning, lighting, uh, um, and within the right of way, you know?
Yeah, just, just for the record, Chris Van Alstine, uh, I, you know, this is a, it's a comment that we, we hear time and, time again across the county. Unfortunately, our, our lighting system is, is, is not really, uh, up to par to what we want to see. Um, I haven't heard any updates on that. I, I can, you know, reach back out to SHA and, and DOT to see if there are any current plans there. Um, you know, unfortunately, just given, given the, the vast need of, of upgrading our facilities, uh, countywide, it's, it's, uh, it's, it's, it is, it is a priority. It's just, it's something that is, is hard to, hard to achieve all, all at once.
And I want to add that we have met with M C D O T and we're coming, we are trying to schedule a meeting with S H A. So whenever we're in these meetings, we do bring these issues to their attention. So we'll definitely mention that because we are trying to work on coordination of a meeting with S H A. We have met with M C D O T and twice already, but we, we are still continuing the conversation. So I appreciate the comment.
Thank you. And I'm well aware that, that there is a, an inventory of lighting, that the county is aware of lights that need to be replaced and lighting that actually needs to be installed. So if, if they can at least let us know, you know, where this, where this is on the list, that would really be helpful. My next question has to do with your, your SWOT, your strengths, weaknesses, opportunity and threats slide. And I understand that that is, that's capturing the input and perspectives of the residents. And I'm asked, my question to the team would be thinking about that SWOT list that you've presented. How many of those items on those lists in terms of a call to action or moving forward are things that either planning and coordination with a sister agency or planning handing off to a sister agency could actually put into action or effectuate? Because some of the things are, again, about perspectives, and I understand that, but there's some other things on that list that would really be something that we could either tap on the shoulder of economic development. And I heard Commissioner Verma, and I agree with him, there's been a lot of tech, commentary regarding biotech in the county, and we've got the Z T A in front of us, that there's opportunity. We, we've had discussions regarding opportunity zones. That's not necessarily within this agency's bailiwick, but it isn't, it is a chance to have a conversation with another agency or organization and say, hey, we're hearing this, we're seeing this, we just want to make you aware. We can partner with you or here's the data that we've got that may substantiate what your efforts. So again, I'm going to pause because I'd like to hear your, your response to that.
I'll start and then I'll let my colleague Philip jump in here, because I feel like I'm kind of hogging the microphone here. And I do want to apologize to Chris again, I apologize. I saw the name and I just, I don't know. But just to answer your question specifically, there are a number of things, and you highlighted in the opportunities and the threats area, there are a number of ways that we could partner with other agencies and develop working systems, working partnerships that would enable, like you said, us to be able to resolve those issues fairly quickly. Like one of the issues having to do with accessibility and inclusion and, and feeling the need, like during the pedestrian audit, as I, as I brought to the attention, to your attention, is that with slight fixes along the, the right of way, you can enhance that environment significantly, making it a more traveled, more safer space for folks who are not only walking, but who are wheelchair-bound. And we are very conscious of that, given our partnership with Independence Now, who are also speakers on the panel. They kind of guide us when it comes to assessing different intersections and saying whether or not they are safe and things that, you know, people who are walking, who enjoy the, the privilege of walking wouldn't notice on a regular basis. So I think there's a lot that we could do, considering the funding that's being put in this area towards employment and employment zones, enhancing, using some of that funding that could be state, state funding to enhance small businesses and, and building, you know, an awareness that isn't there right now, and maybe even enhancing the, the curb appeal of some of the, the shops that are existing, so that they are bringing in more revenue. As, as you know, COVID has, has, has taken a toll on most businesses, and so the vacancies in offices and retail market is, you know, like everywhere else, it's, it's a problem. So I'm, I'm opening up to my colleague to kind of let Philip weigh in on here, but I, I definitely think you pointed out the right categories for us that we're focused on, which is opportunities and the threats. The strengths and weaknesses are really about mindset and, but this is a great location. So we acknowledge that we want to use what, what is existing to the community right now and just make it better.
Thanks, Molly. I, I would add to that. I think, you know, generally, you know, there is this sort of natural tension in master plans between, you know, what we hear in community aspirations and really, you know, sort of what is practical and what we can do in terms of a master plan and land use regulation, and then what we can do in partnership with other agencies. And, you know, your point is really well taken, and we've had these conversations amongst ourselves, you know, what do we do with this, actually, you know, quite massive volume of data and, and we have. So, you know, we've been talking about this and had conversations about how we can partner with agencies and, and transfer this information. And, you know, we're, we're developing a strategy and looking into that, and hopefully we'll, we'll have more on that the next time we, we see the planning board.
Mr. Butler, did you want to say something? You look like you were about to say something.
No, I'm just going to say that, you know, in terms of the question, we're, we're looking at the low hanging fruit ways, the most immediate things that we can do and, and start knocking some of these things off our list. I don't think we have to wait until the plan is, is adopted to start addressing some of these needs, which are, are basic needs of our county residents. So we, we are in active conversations on how to do that. And, and like Philip, Molly were saying, I think we'll be back soon with a little more to report on that shortly, so. But the point is very well, very well taken.
Excellent. And my last comment is, it's, it's a comment and a question. One of the challenges that we frequently face with, with plans, especially with outreach, is diversity in terms of responses. And your outreach effort shows that we can't get a diversity in terms of responses, in terms of language and age, as ethnicity and race. I would ask you to think about in your, in terms of your lessons learned, what can we apply to future projects or current projects? We, we've gotten some not so positive feedback on some other projects about our, our lack of ability to reach some of the audiences that you've reached. So if you would think about that, that would be helpful. I know Director Wright recently talked about D E I efforts in the county, and I think there's an opportunity for us to tap into the success that you've had here and apply it elsewhere in terms of the scalability of some of the things that you've done, as well as how do we, how do we be a little bit more, as you said, Ms. Jackson, creative? So that's my final thought. If you've got any comments or other input on that, I'm, I'm open to hearing it.
I did have, I did have one comment, and it's just because I'm a perfectionist, but I feel like we still, we still have a lot of work to do. I mean, we have, we have reached a significant amount of black and brown people, which I'm very excited about being a black and brown person, but I am very aware that our Asian community, our, no, I'm not, I'm not ignoring our, our, our ways that we could improve upon reaching people. But I, but, but your comment is very much appreciated because we are trying to, are trying our very best to be intentional about having genuine conversations and like, like we keep emphasizing, having real and reaching people wherever they are, wherever they are, truly.
And I just wanted to add that, you know, I'm really, really proud of the effort that this team has made to move the ball forward in terms of outreach. And I think the presentation that you all received today really reflects that. I think they've done an amazing job. And we are sharing the information internally. We are talking about how some of the lessons learned here can be used in other plans. And so the Everyday Canvassing Group is actually also working with our Tacoma Park Minor Master Plan Amendment. So we're taking some of the good lessons learned here, and we are looking at applying them and, and, you know, we are trying very hard not to work in silos with one team doing something and not being able to, to share the good ideas with others. So I, I think we are, again, very appreciative of the work this team is doing, and we are very much looking at how we can apply it broadly.
Excellent. Congratulations again, team.
I get a couple of comments. Jerry Sushi, I'd like to make a few comments, and I want to compliment Molly and this team that's put this together. I think it's fantastic. I'm going to be very blunt. My first visit, Patap mentioned his first visits, but was in 1965, and I thought it was a dynamic corridor. I do live over there in Rockville. That was a selection of my wife, who was from Silver Spring. But I saw high-rise buildings in White Oak, and I think personally, perhaps the county has been selling this corridor short. When you look at the effort on the I-270 corridor, all the development over there, where does 270 take you? Well, it takes you to Frederick and parts of Pennsylvania. But when you look at the 29 corridor, which is part of the I-95 corridor, it takes you to Baltimore, Philly, New York, Boston, it takes you south to Richmond, and it takes you to the Research Triangle in North Carolina. Guess Tanya made a presentation to us, she attended a meeting on regional cooperation. And as you talk about the fact that people in Prince George's and in Montgomery County share the park that we have there, the Fairland Park, the swimming pool, I guess the hockey rink, the, the other ice stuff is where the residents from this car to go. The other thing, the person that's in charge of the County Execs Regional Center is working to get something in there from the Montgomery College. When you look at Silver Spring, they have set up loom, rooms in there, they're, they have, you know, kind of, kind of models in there that are patients in a hospital, and the students can actually work on that. If there's something wrong with, with the mannequin that's there, a bell rings, someone goes to tend it. So I, I think that's something that really needs to be looked at from a regional standpoint. Again, you look at vacant office space in Burtonsville, and it could be utilized by Montgomery County College to assist these residents in this corridor for really a diversity of educational benefits and job opportunities. A permanent college site would be great. People coming from, you know, Fort Meade and, and, you know, NSA, et cetera, that live in Montgomery County could stop off in the corridor and take classes, not having to go to downtown Silver Spring, downtown Rockville, or downtown Chermontown. So there's really a lot, and I think it really takes a bit of an effort. You say you're talking to Prince George's County, but the potential of Conterra and the benefit that that would have in that's development to this corridor, you know, the Viva White Oak effort, I think there was an effort to give priority to the 270 corridor in terms of, you know, medical development and want to be sure that this corridor has the advantage to take full advantage of that. But I, I think an effort with Prince George's County to see what, and one time I had even recommended getting the, the College Park Metro extended up to, you know, to, to this area through Conterra and actually touch 270, I mean, the I-29 corridor, so you'd have a similar situation as you. So I, I really compliment the effort, but I really think that needs to take a little bit of a look with Prince George's County on how both counties can optimize the development here. It is called a quad county area, which is Prince George's, Montgomery, Howard, and, and Arundo. So there's, if people are working, you know, and again, we did bus shoulders, you know, in the 1980s, it's just taken that many years to get the B R T going. So I, I think the county, really the Economic Development Agency, the Chamber of Commerce, I think a joint effort, our planning joint effort with Prince George's to optimize this corridor, the nine, what I call the 95, the U S 29 corridor, and kind of a joint effort, I think would be helpful to the residents both in Prince George's and Montgomery. And as a by-county agency, I think we could take a look at that to some degree. And those are my comments for the moment.
Absolutely. We, we couldn't agree with you more. I think we've had similar conversations as a team, just to kind of let you know that there is this asset of Route 29 that we're looking to enhance.
Thank you.
I wanted to build on some things that I think a number of other people have said about this idea of, you know, new development and the potential for gentrification being a threat. I want to call your attention to my favorite study, which is Will Stancil's study at the University of Minnesota that looks at every census tract in the country between, I believe it's 2000 and 2016, in terms of trends in the income as well as the racial demographics of every census tract in the country. And I'll send you a link to it, but what it shows is that in this area, you have two census tracts. One is just bordering 29 on the west side and straddling the I C C, where there is definitely a trend to larger proportion of low-income residents, decline in the population of white residents. Also, the census tract that is around Fairland Recreational Park and Green Castle Lakes, just between Route 29 and Robie Road and north of the I C C also shows similar trend. And I really, I think that, you know, it's important, whenever we're gathering input, to acknowledge and respect the fact that people have perceptions, fears, opinions of various kinds, and to be responsive to those, but also to check that against what the available evidence, you know, suggests, the data suggests about what's going on. And I think in this area, what the Stancil study shows is that the problem in this part of the county, to the extent that there is a problem associated with real estate development, is that there's been disinvestment and abandonment of some of these neighborhoods. Not that we've, we're seeing displacement or gentrification, in fact, that that is, you know, sort of the flip side of this concern, that it's legitimate to be worried about being pushed out, but it's also a big problem if neighborhoods are not getting fresh public and private investment, and the result is that not only is some of the physical infrastructure like sidewalks and some of the things you've talked about not receiving investment from the government or from developers, but also that what that does to the quality of the schools, what it does to the ability to attract things like new grocery stores, which is another thing that one of your commenters that you highlighted, you know, and said, hey, we want some more food options, because if you're relying on transit, we want something more than just the international market. Those are the sort of things that are generally facilitated by new, new development, and it's important to, you know, recognize that that offers advantages, not just for more affluent people, not just for people who are white, but for people of color, people of middle or lower incomes, because they need access to high-quality amenities, services, retail, all those other things as well. So I would sort of put that as, at a minimum, acknowledge that that is, that the possibility of new development is certainly, in some ways, some may reasonably perceive that as a threat, but it's also an opportunity and can be the currency that pays for both public and private infrastructure and amenities and services that everybody deserves, whatever their race or income level or, or ethnicity might be. So I'm, I'll send you that, a link to that, and I highlighted a couple of the census tracts that, you know, kind of pop out in that study. I think there's an opportunity to update that analysis because Stancil was using 2016 A C S data, and I think now there's, you know, we could bring that up to date. It's not, he was intentionally kind of simplifying and using only some data points that are, that were readily available. So I think he could replicate that and update it pretty easily. I know that we have work going on to have a refined equity tool that may be more nuanced, but I think it's better to do something that is relatively straightforward, rather than not have any data at all, and kind of, you know, test some of the input that you get from the public, which is a valuable source of information, against other data and, and observations about what's, you know, what the trends are and what's going on in these neighborhoods.
Absolutely, we agree. And, and please do send us the information. We look forward to comparing what we have been just having general conversations with to, like you said, highlighting some of the more regional information that we're receiving too. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. If there are no- If there are no other comments or questions, we could wrap this up and maybe take a vote to go into closed session to get some legal advice from our council about perspective changes in the planning board's rules of procedure. But I think Carol, Carol wanted to say something and then maybe she'd make a motion if she'd, if she's in the mood for that.
Well, actually, first I'd like to ask, do we know what, what's the schedule for the next steps on the, on this master plan coming forward to the board?
Do you want me to jump in with that, Molly? Okay. So our next steps is we are and have been for quite some time, developing the existing conditions report and analysis. So that's, that will be the next time we are in front of the planning board. We expect that to happen early spring, most likely in April, which then will follow up with our visioning, community visioning in the spring and summer. And going through the process of the preliminary draft, working draft will, we expect in the fall, fall of 2022, to have our working draft and by the end of the year, a public hearing for this project with the planning board.
Okay. Yeah. And somebody just pointed out to me, we do have a legislative item that was a late addition before we do the closed session. So if, I think that concludes this briefing and we'll be back in a minute for that legislative update. Thanks very much. Okay, we are ready for a short legislative update, I believe. And with us for that, we have Kalene Kafara.
For the record, my name is Kalene Kafara and I'm here with the General Counsel's Office. And I'm here today to ask the board to support HB 404 with amendment. I understand you received the materials yesterday evening. If there's any questions, I can start with that. If not, I can jump into a background of the bill.
Go right ahead.
So HB 404 expands a previously Montgomery County local bill to a statewide bill by authorizing local authorities to decrease the maximum speed limit after performing an engineering and traffic investigation. And it also prohibits the local authority from implementing new speed monitoring systems where the speed limit was decreased. Under the Transportation Article, Section 11-130 defines local authority as a political subdivision or local board or other body under the laws of the state that has authority to enact laws and adopt local police regulations. Under the, due to the ambiguity of local authority, it is unclear whether the commission falls under this local authority. So we are asking that the board supports with amendment. The amendment would specifically mention the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission in this bill that would give us the flexibility to regulate their posted speed limits governed by 21-803, the transportation article. I have Elizabeth Adams here at the General Counsel's Office. Help me answer any questions that the board may have about this.
Good morning.
Hello there. How've you been?
Good.
Very good. Do we have any questions?
Yeah, this would apply to the parkways and roadways in the parks or broader than that, than that. In terms of, say, approving a subdivision, any ability to define what the speed limits might be? Or is it just parkland?
So Kalene, I can speak to that if you want. If, if the road is already clearly completely encompassed in one of our parks, we have the ability to regulate that because it's, it's our road. If it is a road that we have that is adjoining a state highway, then there are additional requirements that we have to comply with, with the State Highway Administration. But this would give us the ability to regulate that speed after a speed safety study was conducted. Whereas as it relates to specific developments, it would still need to be our road if we're going to regulate the speed on it. Otherwise, it's somebody else's road.
And what about coordination with Montgomery County DOT? How would that fit in?
So that would be in, if we have a road that we share entrance points with Montgomery County or the state highway, I think we should probably work in concert with them. I know that Vision Zero is, that mission is, is shared by Montgomery County. So I think they would probably be a good partner in this process. I won't speak for state highway. But we.
Well, we have a new secretary there, so new Secretary of Transportation from the toll roadside. So maybe he would be open.
I, I would hope, I would hope, right, that we could all kind of step forward and unity there. But yeah, if we have a road that intersects with a different county or state entity, we do need to be mindful of how our traffic regulation could therefore impact their traffic on those roads. But that should quite frankly be revealed, I would expect, in the safety study that we have to conduct.
Thank you. Would this also impact, it was an issue that was raised earlier with regard to the bike, you know, the, on MacArthur Boulevard, that Commissioner Verma raised about the potential for cameras, speed cameras. Does, if they move that over from the police, would this also allow us that kind of regulation? Or is that something, obviously it's outside the scope of this particular bill. But I'd ask that if the ability to regulate the speed comes to us on the roads that we control, I would hope that we would also have the ability to put in speed, speed cameras as part of that. So I'm just asking if you could look at that bill, the other bill as well, to make sure that they, they work together.
I think Kalene's taking notes.
Okay. Okay. With that said, could we get a motion on supporting this legislation?
I move to support.
Jerry Sushi second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? That's approved. And while we're here, could we get a motion to go into closed session to get legal advice on perspective changes in the planning board rules of procedure?
So move for closed session.
Say.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? That is approved too. And after that will be adjourned. So see you later.